Can you go ahead and call this August 19th, 2019 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order? Thanks everyone for coming this evening. Rebecca, do you mind leading us in the pledge this evening?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to communications from the public. Now is the time set aside for the public to comment on items that are not advertised this evening as a public hearing. We do have four public hearings advertised for this evening, but now would be your opportunity to bring anything to the council's attention, just as an FYI, item 6A of the agenda, while advertised under public hearings. That public hearing was closed at the August 5th, 2019 meeting, so if you do have any comments now, it would be your opportunity to comment. Sir?
Thank you. Scott Countryman, 239 Dakota, and appreciate this opportunity for public comment. Before we find out how much of this called turd sandwich we have to eat on Skiles, I wanted to express some communication concerns I have, and I didn't want them to come across as reactionary to the findings on the Skiles project. But I've been going to a couple of these meetings and a couple of thoughts are going through my mind are how often are people coming to these council meetings after the facts? After zoning has been decided, after planning has been decided, and we're kind of nearing the end stage like we are with the Skiles project, and you're getting feedback from community, but it's too late, where you feel like your hands are tied. I feel that on the Skiles project. I also feel like that on the access of the quarry project onto Dakota. My home address shares the same name, and yet I didn't get a notification that that was up for discussion. And I understand there are processes in place. You put it in the newspaper. We all know newspapers' subscriberships are declining. We also put notices in people's mailboxes within a radius of like 150 feet. That obviously I felt outside that group, but I'm clearly a stakeholder in that decision. So my challenge would be if we're finding that community members are coming late to the game on these conversations, maybe we ought to consider retooling our notification system. SMS or text message system I could opt into on my water bill says, give me your cellphone number if you'd like to be notified about happenings in your neighborhood. Something like that to add to the ways and means that you guys are communicating to the public would be fantastic. I don't think that would be hugely onerous. Also maybe increasing the radius of the notification zone around an area would be very helpful to get us more involved earlier as opposed to later. I also have some concerns about what I witnessed as far as communication coming from staff towards planning board and towards you, the council. I heard our senior planner, when reviewing the findings of fact on the Skiles project, say that the project is largely encumbered by asphalt and that landscape would be welcomed. Well, I wasn't sure, it wasn't clear where the finding of fact was that the landscaping would be welcomed. Maybe there were some complaints from neighbors that they wanted to see that landscaped, but I didn't see where that was backed up with finding of fact. That sounded more like an injection of an opinion in the findings of fact with regard to that project, so that was a concern. I also heard the senior planner and the public works director gloss over the findings of facts on the traffic, saying mere 2.6% increase in traffic would be established as a result of the project. Well, my question to you is what sounds more factual? Traffic study revealed the development would cause a mere 2.6% increase in traffic, or the traffic study funded by the developer, which took measurements during off-peak traffic season, showed that an engineer estimated 2.6% increase in traffic would occur. However, it's difficult to determine the impact of that traffic because pedestrian traffic was not factored, nor do we know the degree at which the intersection of Skiles in Wisconsin is failing since that information was collected 10 years ago. A lot has changed since then, and the quarry development will compound traffic concerns on the intersection of Skiles in Wisconsin. So if you have a choice between those two, which would you prefer? Because if you're getting a lot of the first, that's putting a lot of pressure on you, our elected officials standing behind the bench or sitting behind the bench, to dig into these projects, to get to the meat of these problems. So I did want to express that as I had been listening to the planning board, hearing facts of finding of facts, and also during the council meeting last time we met. Lastly, with regard to staff communication, I spent some time digging into the Wisconsin corridor project. I looked at the names of the people on that committee, a lot of them very well-respected members of the community. I would trust them to come up with recommendations for my neighborhood. I was also pleased to see that the planning department was in attendance at each meeting, and the public works department was in attendance for about half of those meetings. What I couldn't help but notice when I reviewed the minutes from those meetings was that it felt like the corridor team, committee, was building a picture of what that corridor would look like, and that was their task. What was missing was strategic implementation. I couldn't find evidence of it, and if it did happen, it might have happened in a planning board meeting. The minutes online only went through December of 2018. But we hired a consultant. We have hired staff. If they were to have seen this picture that was being painted by the corridor committee, where was, and there was conversation about traffic flows and problems on Wisconsin, where was the strategic direction that said, we probably need to stagger the development on this corridor to allow for things that we can't control, like MDT's control of Wisconsin or the pinch point known as the viaduct? That frustrates me. If there was strategic direction given and strategic implementation direction given to you, and you didn't heed it, then I put that responsibility on you for some of these zoning problems we're dealing with with Wisconsin corridor. But if it was not offered to you, then it was the paid professionals, our staff, that I believe has failed our community. So recommendation, coming back to my comments in the prior council meeting, I would strongly urge you to look at a moratorium to figure out what the heck is going on. I got an email from somebody that after the last meeting said, Scott, your comments in the last council meeting were spot on. It's exactly why we moved out of Whitefish, and they're now living in the county because of what is happening. So it's not just me, it's not just one or two of me, it's several of us that are frustrated with what's going on with the developments in Whitefish and the zoning that we're dealing with. Moratorium may be the right answer. Lastly, Councilor Hildner, I took your advice following the last council meeting. I spoke up, I reached out to MDT. The next day, I had a conversation with Bob Vossen, who's the regional director for MDT for Western Montana. We had some communication, shared some emails on some creative ways to solve for safety concerns along Wisconsin. More cosmetic, trying to make it easy. I got feedback from him today in a phone call, and I'll just give you, for the benefit of the council and for people here. Regarding the left turn signal on Wisconsin and Edgewood, there has been a study that's been going on by the MDT. I don't know if we knew that. The study is going to be concluded hopefully the end of this August, possibly September, to determine whether or not there's enough left turn utilization to warrant a green signal light onto Edgewood. So that was very encouraging. I would, my recommendation would be to scrutinize that study when the findings come out, because I don't know how a boat carrying a trailer counts as two vehicles using that intersection of that turn lane, or if that's one. So the results may or may not be accurate. He said regarding crosswalks, because we talked about those along Wisconsin, that those have to be initiated by the city. Requests need to be made by the city. He did offer one word of caution that as you add more crosswalks, you end up with driver fatigue. They stop, they start to disregard them if they're not occupied, so to be careful with how many we ask for, but that they would entertain a request for a couple. So recommendation would be to take a closer look at a couple of crosswalks on Wisconsin. Regarding speed, the last speed study was done in 2014, and that actually extended the 35 mile an hour zone northward past the Lake Lodge, but we haven't had one since. And I had asked that we entertain the idea of slowing down Wisconsin to 25 miles an hour. Bob indicated that that would require a speed study. We haven't had one in five years, so that would be something I would recommend that we take a look at. He also said that state legislature can pass reductions in speed limits in certain zones, so it would also be incumbent upon all of us to maybe reach out to David Fern to see if that could get introduced in Helena. Lastly, we talked about the left turn onto Skiles from Wisconsin. He said there's little that can be done, and Chief Dial, he said that's largely an enforcement issue, and cars are passing on the shoulder on Wisconsin to avoid cars that are turning left onto Skiles, that that should be dealt with by law enforcement. And I think Councilor Hildner highlighted that. It would really help Chief Dial if we could get more enforcement on that. I think it would help to improve the traffic studies that are being done. We would have a better indication as to how much traffic would back up on Wisconsin when somebody wants to take a left on Skiles if people couldn't pass. So that was from conversations with Bob Vossen at MDT. Lastly, I did throw up a hail mary strategy. I did some time digging into the code, and I found that my hail mary strategy would not work, that there is code that says if a developer purchases multiple plots of land, that we would automatically erase that lot line between lots. I believe that exists. I did read it. That's unfortunate. I would encourage the council to maybe put that bullet back in the gun. I don't know if that would hinder further developers from wanting to buy multiple lots, but would give you one more opportunity to review a development prior to it going through. So that's a piece of code that just kind of rubbed me the wrong way, and I would love to give you guys more opportunity to review these projects with more ammunition, not less. So thank you.
Thanks, Scott. I normally don't respond to public comment, but I'll take this opportunity tonight. If folks in the audience are even listening, do you want to be kept up to speed with what's happening in the city? Our city manager has a global email list that he's happy to add you to. It gets distributed on a weekly basis with all the agendas and reports for the upcoming week. I think it's on the order of what, Adam, 8, 900 folks have signed up for that outreach service at least?
Quite a few.
Yeah, so if you're interested, please contact Adam Hammett, and he can add you to the list to get regular notifications. Further public comment this evening? Leo can go.
Hi, I'm Leo Keane. I live at 514 Pine Place, and I came to here to listen in on your discussion, of course, for the proposal for Skiles Avenue. Being a neighbor, I'm pretty invested in that, very interested in it. But really what I want to mention or talk about tonight is what I would hope that this council would start thinking about, a bigger picture for Whitefish, take into account the big picture. Instead of this piecemeal approach that we get with every project that comes down the line, we have to consider this, that, and the other thing every single time. There's a dramatic influx of high-density development coming into town, and I just got a feeling we're not prepared for it. About a half a century ago, when I was studying wildlife biology and Wildlife Biology 101, I learned the term, what was the term? Carrying capacity. That was a half a century ago, so yeah, it comes and goes, but carrying capacity, whether you're talking about wildlife habitat or our town, there is a level at which the town can accommodate so many people in a comfortable way. You reach a point in the carrying capacity where there's a point of diminishing returns. The more people, the more wildlife, say, in a habitat that you have, the less the quality of life becomes for those who remain in the town or in the habitat. And I got a feeling that's what's happening in Whitefish right now. I don't think anyone would not notice that, having seen the tremendous amount of traffic this summer and the congestion and the, it's a mess, and we're just, we're too small of a town, we're not prepared for it, and I got a feeling that developers, of which I am one, but I do believe we need to go slow, we need to grow slower. We don't need, we don't need to bring in so many people that it becomes hard for the rest of us to live here. So my request to the council is start thinking about a bigger picture, what we can do as a city to have some control over how we grow and the quality of life for those of us who love to live here. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Leo. Appreciate your comments. Ben?
Good evening, Mayor Melfeld and council. Ben Cavan, 2130 Houston Drive, formerly Donut, annexed against my will, ably defended by Sean Frampton, or insufficiently defended, I guess. Pardon me, Sean.
Jake, strike that from the record.
I didn't come up here to make humor. I had two thoughts about the previous two speakers before I had my own idea. The left turn at Skiles is a big problem, and I go around to the right like you're not supposed to, and I drive up and down that road all the time, and I see that that is a serious problem that goes on and on, so something ought to be done about it, which supports the first speaker. And then Leo Keane's comment about we should try to grow slower, I think is really a good comment. That needs to be heard. The reason I came up here was to talk about recycling of glass, which I talk about whenever I come up and speak, I guess. I have been saving my glass ever since the people in Columbia Falls quit accepting it in November, I believe it was. So I have a whole lot of glass. Maybe that could help subsidize somebody to get into the glass recycling business. And since this is budgeting night, I would ask that you think about adding something about recycling glass. Thank you.
Nancy, thanks.
Nancy Allen, 525 Hazel Place. I'm here about the Skiles Avenue thing as well, but I have to comment also on Leo and the other gentleman. I think it's, I understand that you guys have some of the power, or that you get to make some of our choices, and I'm asking you two to just take a little pause as things are getting so hectic and different here. I'm actually here to speak about a different issue that I, somehow I must have missed it when Richard was bringing it up, like I think it was last May, and that is the deer population. I've lived in the same place for 28 years, which is over the viaduct, and the deer over there have gotten way more numerous and also way less afraid, and I've watched them like start to get aggressive with little dogs, and, oh, now that the ones have antlers and stuff, you know, they're a little, I don't try to get near them, but anyways, I just feel like there's a way, they've got an out-of-balance amount of deer in our town. And I know that there's other places like Helena, and I think Libby just started culling the deer, and I'm here to suggest we start something of that nature. And, oh yeah, like you can get so close to them. Yesterday, I got three feet away from a mother nursing her two twins, and she doesn't, they don't flinch. Like, in my neighborhood, they don't flinch. So I would really like us to do something about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Further comment tonight from the public? Rebecca?
Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue. I came because I was the chair of the Wisconsin Corridor Planning Committee, and I just wanted to let you know, I did reach out to the DOT representative that we worked with. Her name is Vicki Krenich, and she's an urban planner. There is funding for improving the district, there's a block grant. I'll give you copies of that. It seems like we kind of did, we did want something like this along this corridor, where there was a lot of workforce housing really close to Wisconsin so that people could walk into town, they could catch a bus to go up to the mountain. We have a lot of employers out that way. So we were trying to create a walkable community. So this type of project is actually what we had in mind. Where it seems like it kind of falls apart is the traffic concerns, and so I was asking Vicki how that worked. So we can get up to $157,442 a year, which is federally funded, and the state allocates it out. We, as a city, have to go through a nomination process, and the MDT does actually have to approve everything, but we actually can get money for improving things like that. It's for urban redesign and things like that. We have not used it this year. I asked Dana if she knew about it, and she hadn't heard about it. I left a Craig and message, but I haven't talked to Karen about it. But I think the next step is to actually look at how we work with the MDT to progress things along Wisconsin, since it's going to keep coming up, and it's a possibility that we could use money for that purpose. The other thing is, we are having a lot of growing pains right now. Don't forget, the shopkeepers call this Angry August for a reason, but Rhonda Fitzgerald keeps telling everybody in town, we really only have two really busy months, July and August. So town will get back to normal a little bit. Years ago, we did have a moratorium suggested with the last build-out before the recession. What it came down to is that you have to legally justify that. We would have been able to do that, but we just got an extension for our hookups. So San Luis Obispo was able to do a moratorium for three years based on not being able to access their infrastructure, like the water and all that, and that was found valid in the courts, but you can't just set moratoriums. Dave Fern is working on the idea that we could go from Wisconsin being a secondary highway to a primary highway on a legislative process. He's been talking about that. So I just, I know it's hard on the neighborhood right next to a project like this, but what we had envisioned is that people would be living on the block right behind Wisconsin, because it's a really good place for high-density build-out, and it would make a walkable community in that case, too. So that's all I think I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Rebecca. Further public comment tonight? Further comment from the public? Sean?
One moment here while I get this started.
Sure.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Bob Ablyn. I did the traffic impact study for the Skiles project, so I thought I would stand up and briefly talk about some of the findings there, and kind of go along with some of the things that have already been said tonight, but hopefully provide a little bit more insight onto kind of what I was thinking and some of the results from the study, what might be able to be done about that. Couple really important facts about the project. Skiles Place Apartments, when we were talking about the impact from traffic, the total trip generation from the project is going to be approximately 25 cars coming in and out of there during the AMP period, between seven and eight, and this is based on all the IT standards, and 30 trips during the PM peak and about 395 daily trips coming in and out of the apartments. That's probably pretty solid numbers. That doesn't take into account any walking, it doesn't take into account any busing, anything like that. This is just traffic generation from that development. If we talk about comparing that to something else that we can also look at, is the Wisconsin Avenue corridor, currently the corridor is running about 12,000 vehicles a day average, and that's, you know, we could talk about seasonal variations and what it does during the winter, but the official MDT numbers for the Wisconsin corridor is 12,000 cars a day, which is approximately the limit of what a two-lane road can handle. That's just, that's the facts. And I think we all know that, we all have driven down Wisconsin. It's a busy road, and it needs some improvements. But when we look at the Skiles Place Apartments as a percentage of that, that's where that whole, the whole number of the 2% to 3% traffic volume increase. This apartment project will add 2% to 3% additional traffic onto Wisconsin Avenue with just the general corridor. That's well within the daily variations of traffic volumes on that road. It's not to say that it's going to be insignificant, but it is very low. It's not something that's going to be terribly noticeable on a day-to-day basis. It's a, not, just not, simply not a huge amount of traffic. The intersection of Skiles Place and Wisconsin Avenue, everyone has talked about it tonight, and I completely agree with everything everyone said. It's a problem. It should have a left turn lane coming off of Wisconsin Avenue. This has been identified, I think I've identified it a couple times over the years, and it came up in the transportation plans, and it's, this is not a new question. The only real question here is how does this project impact it, and then how does some improvements get implemented to fix it? The standard way of, when we're trying to look at projects and trying to determine how a particular project will impact a existing condition, is the standard is you look at it and say, well, what is the percent increase in traffic? And that's usually the numbers we try to use for saying, okay, well, that's your proportional share for fixing it. In other cases, there can be other things that go on if they're causing a problem, but it's really hard for me as a traffic engineer to come in and say, yes, there's an existing problem here, and this particular entity, or this particular developer, or this person has to fix it, even though it's something that everybody knows about, because a lot of times, that's just not possible for one person to do that. And it takes, you know, it takes the whole community getting involved and getting involved with MDT to actually be able to implement that. So that's where we come up with the idea of, well, we'll do a proportionate share of costs. And there are other ways to do that, based on a lot of different factors, but that's kind of the base condition that we try to go from. So that's kind of where that all came from. There were other questions that came out of the public meeting last time with regards to traffic impacts on Iowa Avenue. That's, it's probably a good topic to discuss, just in the sense that we, identifying the traffic impacts, I do that as the congestion becomes worse on Skiles, trying to get out in and out there, it's Wisconsin Avenue, the more people are going to probably go down Iowa to swing down to Edgewood, hit the signal and be able to get out, which is is, which is actually a fantastic bonus for the project, because that is having a relief valve where people can get out safely onto Wisconsin at the traffic signal. That's a big deal. And that, the whole thing with the left-turn phase there on the signal that they're trying to get MDT to install, that's, that's also a really good thing, trying to allow easier traffic flow through the corridor. You know, how does that impact Iowa Avenue? It will certainly increase traffic on it, but it comes again down to the, you know, what's the total magnitude of that traffic increase? Right now, Iowa's actually a pretty low-volume road. It only has a couple hundred cars going up and down it a day. It's not, not, not a very busy street. With the project, if a bunch of cars are redistributing that direction, it'll probably go up by a couple hundred cars a day. To put that into some little bit easier perspective, to kind of visualize, the peak-hour impacts on Iowa Avenue is going to be about 10 to 20 cars an hour, when it's peak flow coming in and out of the apartments, or I should say, 20, 10 to 20 additional cars an hour coming in and out of the apartments is needed. That equates to about one car every three to six minutes going down Iowa Avenue. That's, which would be probably noticeable, but it's really hard for me to say, yes, one car every six minutes constitutes a traffic problem that has to be corrected. It's really, it's a pretty low number. And that's under peak conditions. Most of the day, you're going to see one car to the apartments every 10 to 20 minutes on Iowa Avenue. So it's not to say that there's going to be no impacts there, but it's hard for me to quantify them in a meaningful way when you're getting a car every couple minutes, and that's it. You know, we could talk about speed control and things like that, but usually that has a lot more to do with the existing geometries. You know, the road, you know, doesn't have curbs or gutters or sidewalks or anything like that, but that's pretty standard in that part of town, and there's really nothing jumping out at me as being different about this location. It's something that we can look at, but there's nothing that I'm seeing in the traffic impact study process that says, yes, we need to do specific improvements along Iowa to make that function. It's, after the, if the project was built out, you'd have, you know, maybe 500, maybe a little more cars a day on that road. If we talk about the capacity of a local street, it's a little bit of subjective thing. It doesn't, a lot of communities don't have real specific numbers tied to it, because it has a lot to do with feeling. But usually, we try to say, well, if you want a local street with local character, you want to be less than 1,000 to 2,000 cars a day. That's kind of just ballpark numbers here. And that does vary, but we're going to be well below that with this project on Iowa. And I think that's most of what I wanted to say. I'm not sure if I'm able to answer questions or not, but I think I'll leave her there. And, go. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate your comments this evening.
Hi, my name is Mark T. Johnson. I'm the project architect, 680 Stone Street, Kalispell. I have a, just a packet here I'd like to submit to the council. My feeling was, I thought that, you know, there's probably some material here that I think that would be really good for you folks to take a look at and consider as you're making your decision on this project. You know, we've gone through quite a lengthy process of approvals. We discussed this in great detail at the last council hearing. But it, you know, the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan really was a broad view of planning and planning development in Whitefish. And so I don't really think this project's been handled on a piecemeal basis. We've been reviewing this in broad scope all the way. This initial set of photographs that you see here are from the existing site. These are the conditions on-site of the vehicle repair, boat storage, the storage facilities, et cetera, that are on this property. There are some areas that aren't, don't have pavement on them, but you can see there's a whole lot of it that does. This property, really, in the way it's situated, with the use, with the facilities that are there, it's really ready for redevelopment. And it's redevelopment that's needed at this time. Our whole project came about from initially trying to provide long-term workforce housing, just providing places for people to live. And, you know, so that's been our emphasis all along. We all agreed that, you know, the proximity to Wisconsin Avenue, public transportation, walking distance to town, bicycling distance, you know, all of these factors come into play, really, I think, when you're talking in terms of, you know, a lifestyle of, you know, living in Whitefish as a community, and being part of that community. You'll see some color renderings that are in here as well. This is our project. This is what we're proposing to do. These are images that have actually, I've been through pre-ARC review, and they had no comments, other than we should not put on any vertical standing seam metal siding, and there should be no vinyl fencing. Otherwise, there were no glaring examples in this, that they felt that the size and scale was not compatible with the neighborhood, that the architectural expression was somehow offensive, or not in keeping with what would customarily be seen in our community here. This is the project that we're proposing to do. I've also included a site plan on there that has some additional information of, you know, where our dumpsters were. We've had some conversations about that. And then this page right here, this shows examples of three-story buildings that are actually in the area. The top two are right off of, just across the VIDOC on Woodland. Three of them are, actually. And then the last one is the third one, or the number four over here. That's actually under construction right now. This is a new project. We have examples of these three-story projects. They border residential areas, business areas as well. So there really is, you know, precedent for this type of a structure in this area. And sort of the last page there is, you know, page 4-4 of the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan. And this project right here is actually one of the ones that are pictured. This is the one right across the VIDOC, just to the left there. The aspen trees have grown up around there. You can't see it quite as prominently as you used to, but it has the large timber balconies. That was a project of mine some years ago. I really feel that it's important to take into consideration these issues. This project is ready for development. I understand everybody's complaining about traffic. Aside from the time that I was attending Montana State University, getting my architectural degree, or the time that I was, that I spent in San Diego pursuing my apprenticeship, I've lived in this area. Been a resident of Kalispell for many, many years. I remember, not that long ago, we had terrible roads in Whitefish. You guys have done a terrific job. You know, you dedicated to getting that problem solved, and you did. I can't remember a time when we've never complained about the traffic. It's an annual occurrence. It's always worse in the summer, it's also bad in the winter. But we sold run. But the real problem, or the real demand and need that we have right now, is for places for people to live. There just isn't enough of them. And that's what this project is trying to address, a real need. The roads will get worked on. I understand the frustration, I really do. I live with it every day, just like the rest of you. But we have an opportunity right now to make a big down payment on all of those housing units that our studies have told us that we need in this community. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. David?
Dave DeGrant Prey, Charlotte, Montana, also here to talk about Skiles. I'm going to talk about, in particular, the housing needs. I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, so I'll try to roll through it here pretty quickly. You know, I'm going to echo Mark's comments a little bit, and then expand on them. So 2015, 2016, actually, it starts probably back in 2007 growth policy. You all decided that housing for your workforce, and for different levels of the community in terms of economic opportunities, was really important. So 2015, 2016, you embarked on a needs assessment, the Whitefish Area Workforce Housing Needs Assessment. And that needs assessment that you all adopted specifically states that 980 additional housing units, more or less, are needed by 2020. Okay? So that equates to about 245 per year. And included in with that number, 980 units, are 580 new rental units, and 38% of those are planned to be market rate. So the private developers have a substantial contribution to this. It's not only subsidized housing. Over the last three years, according to your planning and zoning office figures, you've entitled, meaning building permits have been issued, for 417 units out of 980 that you were hoping to get. So you're already 318 units behind schedule, in terms of providing housing for, for your constituents, for people that you hope that can live and work in Whitefish. Already 318 housing units behind schedule, okay? As of 2019. Actually, 2016, 17, 18, it's not counting 19. According to that, that needs assessment, typical vacancy rate's about 2%, extremely low, as low as anywhere in the nation. This project is specifically targeted to address that issue. You've got studio apartments, one-unit apartments, two-unit apartments. They range in size from about 450 square feet to about 850 square feet. These aren't big palatial units. They're specifically targeted to meet a need that you all have identified and have adopted. It's something that the community's talked about. Private developers are your partners in this. Now, I know that there are tensions. Tensions are inherent in this process. Community impacts occur. Change is difficult. Infill development in particular, which this is, it's redevelopment of an existing parcel. It's not, it's not going out to an undeveloped parcel and creating a new. It's taking an existing, you know, there are three homes, there are a couple of businesses. Infill development is tough, because people are used to a certain, people are accustomed to a certain level of traffic, a certain style of architecture, whatever it might be. And then suddenly, a change is proposed, and it feels like it's a big issue all of a sudden. But private developers are part of the process. And so, looking back at your workforce housing needs assessment, one of the issues that's cited is regulatory barriers to developing workforce housing. And you've actually removed some of those regulatory barriers in this case. You've specifically planned for high-density residential development in this specific location. You've specifically zoned for high-density residential development in this specific location. And I'll just remind you that this project complies in every respect with the zoning that you all have established for this particular site, for this particular neighborhood. So in other words, you've set the parameters. You've said to the community, not only to the development community, but also to the neighbors, that this is where you want growth to occur. It's close to downtown. It's near existing infrastructure. This is where we want it. We have an existing need, this is where we're going to address it. Processes like this actually increase the cost, as you can imagine. They increase the cost of housing. If this project is denied, the developer cannot submit a new application for a year. Okay? So during that period, interest payments need to be made, land payments need to be made. There's a lot of investment, as you can imagine, that's already gone into this process. And so what happens is, you know, developers and neighbors rely on you all to set the parameters for development. And you've done that. And so when a developer comes in, there's a certain expectation that if those rules are met, which they are in this case, that that development will be approved. And so it throws everything up, you know, it makes it quite difficult for investment to occur in your community, when rules are in place and potentially, they're not followed. So I hope that you'll approve the project. Two more quick points. One, so I've been, I've been an elected official like you all. And I've been in positions where there has been, where you've had to think long-term, or I have had to think long-term about the community. It's easy to look at a particular issue that's coming up, the issue of the day, the shiny ball, so to speak, and follow it closely. And it's very, it's very, it's hard to look your neighbors in the eye and say, you know what? I hear what you're saying, there will be impacts, but you know what? The big picture is, this is a larger need that we have identified, and that we've sought to address, and we're going to do it. It's hard to do in your position. I recognize that, and I appreciate your effort in considering this, and appreciate your service. I sincerely mean that. But fundamentally, this is, this project is, our first speaker, I think, tonight, he spoke about implementation of your corridor plan. This is implementation of your corridor plan. This is the corridor plan that you've laid out, this is the zoning that you've put in place. This is what you've asked for. And so this is where implementation occurs. And I know it's difficult, I know it's a public process, and there are motions involved, but this is what you've asked for, and here it is. So I respectfully request that you approve the Skiles project.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate your comments tonight. Connie?
Hi, my name's Connie Cohen. I live at 227 Iowa Avenue. Well, I was going to come up and talk about something that has nothing to do with Skiles, as I thought, I thought that it was close to talking about Skiles, and now we just heard a half an hour on Skiles. I don't get it. Anyhow, I just was going to second what somebody said about letting neighbors know in a bigger area ahead of a project, like maybe 800 feet, 800 feet or something you could consider. I just wanted to second that idea.
Thanks, Connie. Appreciate the comments. Sean?
Good evening. Sean Frampton, 530 West 19th, here on behalf of the applicant for the Skiles Project. And thanks for the opportunity to comment tonight. I'm going to take a little bit different approach than what you've heard, because I've had a chance to review the proposed resolution. So backing up, it seems to me, reviewing this, that the project complies in all respects with all zoning, growth policies, and all the other criteria. The planning staff found compliance, the planning staff recommends approval, and then, to my surprise, there's a motion at the end of the last meeting, before there's ever a word of discussion, saying we want to continue it so we can have a reason to deny it. So, a little bit shocking to me, but nevertheless, here we are, two weeks later, you have no additional report from your staff, you have no additional evidence from anything, and you have a proposed resolution in front of you that speaks to denial. So I'm going to speak to that for a second. So, one of the bases in there, because, as you guys know why I'm here, but if this has to be reviewed, the whole issue is going to be whether or not the denial is so lacking in fact and foundation that it's unreasonable. So here we are in sub-part E, that one of the bases is that all public facilities are not adequate, and in particular, the streets serving the development are not adequate. So to me, on its face, that seems just unreasonable. The basis is even thin, too thin to the point of unreasonable, but essentially, there's no left turn. I get it. Point I want to bring to your attention, at least from my perspective, is that's an existing condition. That condition has been there for a long time. It was there when you approved the quarry, it was there when you approved Alpenglow, it was there when they re-designated the area, it was there for the Whitefish Corridor, or the Wisconsin Corridor, and it was there for the change in zoning in November of last year. It's always been there. So it's nothing new, and this project is not contributing to it. And same thing to the point with the left-hand lane not being a protected lane. I get it, I think we all wish it was. And the point is, is that that wasn't an issue when Alpenglow was approved. So I don't understand how it can be in a position now, and you know my perspective, and it's all with respect. I respect every one of you, especially the ones that have been on here a long time and that I know, but that's my lens. My lens is this arbitrary, like, what are you doing for other people that you're not doing here, or what are you doing differently here than you did in the previous ones? So go back and look at those. Those weren't even discussed. You know, left, if you look at the quarry, it seems like it's a whole lot worse situation. Their traffic studies showed three times the amount of traffic, or peak traffic, than this one. And they're turning left off Wisconsin, and they're turning left in an area where there's a commercial development. So they have to go to the store, Alpine Market, et cetera. So it seems like a much worse situation, and yet, there's no discussion about the council about a left-hand turn lane or traffic problems. So I just have a concern about that, or at least an issue with it. I do believe that the impact that our traffic study showed was only 2% to 3%. Okay? So it's, I don't think that that's a significant impact, and if you look at your second... So it's, I don't think that that's a significant impact, and if you look at your second proposed finding on here, is that the proposed development may have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood, excuse me, because it will exacerbate the traffic, again, 2% to 3%. I don't know that that's an exacerbation, I think that's just a reality of the situation. And with that, we have mitigated the impact. I mean, that's what happens when there's an issue and there's some kind of, the project has a toll, or, you know, it contributes in some way, then the idea is to mitigate it. So it has been mitigated, and our developers worked with the planning staff for that mitigation. And then the final finding was to the effect of that the proposed development is not compatible because there are no other large three-story buildings in the vicinity. So we obviously just showed you the pictures where that is actually not true. So from what I'm seeing, it does appear that this completely complies, and at least from what's being proposed to you as proposed findings, from my lens, my perspective, it is so lacking in fact and foundation that it's unreasonable. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sean. Jen.
Jen Metzwecker, 915 Dakota. I have this agenda, and it said the public hearing is closed. It didn't say continued, it said closed. And many of the neighbors are here, and they're honoring that, because we gave our testimony at the last meeting.
Just because the public hearing's closed, Jen, doesn't mean that folks can't comment during public comment period.
Well, we were told that it was closed, but I hope you respect the many comments that were given at the last meeting.
And they are part of the record and entered into the record.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And we could all speak, but we don't think it's necessary.
You're certainly allowed to. Yes.
Jim Hatterson, 35 Pine, formerly of 525 Skiles. We're all here because of me, honestly. It was my thought process back in 2013 when I lived there. The property was for sale. I had a client that I know, the applicant, known him for 10 years. He's not just some California random developer. I've known him for a long, long time. I was the one that came up with this idea, because I know that, sorry, I'm not a very good speaker here, but I know that this town has needed workforce housing. I know a lot of people that are tired of living with 17 roommates and getting in fights and then not having a place to live, they just want their own place. It's the workforce housing thought process. So, you know, he bought it in 2013. In 2016, we started, I started really doing kind of more some studies, talking to Lori Collins at the housing development, or the community housing development leader. She was like, this is, this is it, this is what we need. You guys, during the first opportunity, when we went through the Whitefish corridor plan and the zoning change, said, you know, I'm not quoting, but it's close enough, this is exactly what our town needed, and you guys all said that and voted for it. We wouldn't be here, again, if it wasn't for me, you know, I'm just trying to give back to the community and a place I love, that let people actually live here, instead of roaming around the streets or going to, driving all the way to Nkalsville or Columbia Falls, because it's a great place to live. And it was, seemed like a great place to do it, where you could walk to down if you wanted to. I came here without a car, things like that. Make a couple more things here. We could have gone in one building. That was a huge one, I don't know if anybody's really said it, we could have gone one large, huge building. It was gigantic, gigantic. It was like the size of a football field. And it would have met the regulations as well, and we would not have had to go through the process, the conditional use process. Didn't want to do that. Literally, by developing two buildings and drawing up two buildings, we made it so there was more green space, there was more, there was less pavement than is already on the project itself. There was two separate buildings, one, the smaller building is up front, so it's not creating a, you know, just a giant eyesore onto the, onto the neighborhood itself. But, and then put the other building back towards the more business section and more multifamily section on that side. So it was creating that thing, and my feeling of that, I didn't want to create, you know, me and Mark didn't want to create this gigantic, just massive thing, that we didn't have to go through this process. We wanted to split it. And all of a sudden, that split has become the problem, that it just doesn't make any sense to me. It's like being, being good and nice and stuff, and then all of a sudden, I mean, I've been going through this process for three years, talking to people and going through all the hoops and just making sure that this thing is ready to go. And I told Mark, I was like, I'm ready to explode, I just, I got to get this out. And that's why I'm a little shaky right now. But, so anyway, on this, just getting to the final part. So I know that the traffic issue, I lived there. I lived on, one of these houses that's going to be demolished, called respectively the Bee House, because it was full of bees and they were just living in the, living in the siding, it sucked. But, lived there, no, it's like, would you rather live in a Bee House or one of these new places? Let's see. So I decided to become, after all this traffic thing, and you know, I know that, you know, the traffic study is math, and cars and things like that, and very much so scientific, shall we say, mathematical. I decided to become a resident again of that area. And so I started driving, and driving at various times of the day in the last three, four weeks, and at least 50 times have gone through there. I saw at your office, sometimes there's overflow on the street for parking. I saw Rich, which is from Altus, cars there a couple times here and there. But I'd say 80% of the time, I could easily take a left. And this is the peak season of summer. I know that when, it's a, it's a great day on the hill, and people all go to, go to the end and go to, when the lifts stop turning, and everybody's like, okay, that was a great day, and then, you know, Wisconsin gets plugged up. But in 80% of the time, when I drove by there, there was not a single car on that whole street, whether I parked or driving. So if this is a disastrous area, and as mentioned by Scott, that it was, you know, and some of the other people that live there, a hazard to community and pedestrians and stuff, I didn't see it in the last month, a month and a half. I know that there are concerns there, of course, but I lived there in 2013, and if it was a problem since 2009, I didn't experience it then either. When Scott also talked about, you know, driving to the other side of the, past the white lines to create people from going around. Well, he's breaking the law doing that, but that's all right. I love his county, anyway. Anyway, I guess that's just kind of my statement, that it's just been such a passion of mine, and I've kind of held my tongue, because Mark's the project architect on this project. I just wanted you to know that there's a huge history in this, and that we follow everything, and it's just confusing that now, you know, you can't change. I think I'll be done now, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Scott, I think you've already had opportunity to provide comment, not until others have provided comment, out of respect, please. We do have a lengthy agenda ahead of us, so folks could be
Hi. Jenny Rolcox, 223 Iowa and 200 and a half Wisconsin Avenue. And I do realize that there is a need for more housing, that's obvious. However, multi-complexes should be kept out on the highway where they belong, where the traffic can be supported by a four-lane highway and that infrastructure. Just because it's legal doesn't make it right. Do we continue down this path because it's been done before? Because there's a precedent? Because the zoning at the time it was made was thought to support this situation? I realize it's time to make changes. I'm sure you realize it's time to make changes too. But this type of structure does not belong in our neighborhoods on the north side of Wisconsin. They don't belong there. I understand the gentleman who spoke about the road structure, and it's only 2.6, but he also said Iowa doesn't have sidewalks and whatever, because it is standard for that neighborhood. And that's right. More traffic on those roads is not standard for that neighborhood. A three-story multi-complex is not standard in that neighborhood, and it should be stopped. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Lana Elliott, 309 Iowa Avenue. I guess we jump forward to the Skiles project. I live right there on the corner, and I have to tell everybody, I heard somebody laugh when they said they took, when you're trying to make a left on Skiles and Wisconsin, that they just whizzed by. I've almost been sideswiped there quite a few times. That neighborhood is meant to be a single-family neighborhood, no big units. It's dangerous. I walk down Iowa daily to take my dog to the bike trail. At times, I have to jump off into somebody's yard for safety because of the cars, because there is no sidewalks. And I also heard tonight that it would only generate 25 more cars. I don't think so. You have 54 units. They're not affordable. First of all, the studios are probably going to have a boyfriend and a girlfriend. Each unit is going to have probably two cars. Then they have guests. It's just overwhelming. And right now, even with the facility that's there, it's low-key, it's not congested, and I just would love to see our neighborhood preserved. That's why I moved to Whitefish, was the quality of life. I've lived there for 11 years now, right on that corner, next to the two empty little fields that I pray that somebody's not going to come along and build a big, old, huge townhouse in our neighborhood. But I just wanted to state, yeah, since we jumped forward to the Skiles, I just feel that it's not necessary. We have too much congestion, there's safety issues, and we do have a lot of wildlife there, and I have actually seen them hit. And they have nowhere to go. I mean, there's a forest up behind my house in the corner, they have, but I just want to state, please consider something smaller than, not anything that's enormous. I mean, we're getting too many people. That's the bottom line. It's the quality of life. If you go down the streets, you see home after home for sale now. We're not getting any longevity of people staying, they want to sell out and get out. Because this is not Seattle, or, I mean, it's just getting way too much. I've been here for 30 years. It's just overwhelming for me. But now to try to do it right across from where I see it on a daily basis, I just, I would go for sidewalks on Iowa, so I could walk down to the bike trail safely without more cars. Thank you.
Thanks, Lana.
Bill Goldberg, 1240 Birch Point Drive. I actually wasn't going to speak tonight on this, but I didn't know that it was open to comment, but I guess I'm a little shocked that the council has come out on the opposition of the project, reading that last article in the paper. We've had numerous discussions with the applicant. He's followed our project in Columbia Falls, the Highline project, which I think some of you are aware of. Much of the concerns that the public's showing on this project, that same community in, you know, Columbia Falls, they were expressing the same concerns with traffic. Bob did the traffic study for us on that project, and I guess overall, I just want to point out the need, obviously, we all recognize the need, but the product being available, Highline wants public that they could reserve those units. They had 107 applications in 24 hours of their website going live. So we've completed 72 units in Phase 1, and they're completely booked. Clients fly in tomorrow, asking us to build 107 more units. There's going to be 207 units total there. There's one point of ingress and egress. So I understand the point of the traffic. Those traffic studies are daunting to decipher, almost impossible, but, you know, looking at all that data, you know, trusting the experts to say, this, this is what the numbers show. I'll say from my own opinion on that project, it's surprisingly smooth, and I think even the surrounding neighbors would now, that the units are being occupied. I plan to go to those same owners and ask, you know, six months, 12 months from now, asking the same opinion, how impactful has it been? No doubt, change is difficult. I understand that side, but, you know, the applicant asking opinion as to what's happened over there, seeing what these guys have put together for a project, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a great-looking project. I have talked to numerous people on that specific location. Obviously, being close to downtown is exciting for a lot of folks that are going to be targeting that kind of product to live in, many of which working in, you know, the downtown. So I just wanted to throw it out there that, you know, that there's a lot of people looking forward. I understand there's a lot of people upset about it, but there's also a lot of people looking forward to that product coming online as a place to live, so.
Thanks, Bill. Further public comment. Scott, one minute, and then we're moving on.
Thank you, Mayor Melfield. It was in my notes, and I wanted to say
There's something new. New information, correct?
Yes. So I appreciate the city manager's email, I subscribe to it. What you addressed, that's a fantastic way to communicate what's on the plans. It's not a notification system of things happening inside a specific geographic area. It's not a substitute for the mailbox drop. So I just wanted to say, that's what I want to see improved, is the notification system. Communication from, from city manager's been great with emails, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Scott, appreciate the comments, feedback. Further public comment tonight. I'm going to go ahead and stay with the audience, any volunteer board reports from the audience? How about the council? Any board reports? Not seeing any, we'll move on to item five of our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the August 5th minutes? Richard.
Just a couple of corrections, if I may. Mr. Mayor, on page 34 of the minutes, bottom, the last paragraph, it says Leo Keen, 514 Pine Place, wanders. I think he wanders. He may wander, but I think it's wonders, so if we could change that, that'd be great. Thought you'd enjoy that, Leo. Then I would come back to page 38 of the minutes, again, in the last paragraph, where it says, "He did," and Mr. Panasidi, dot, dot, dot. I think it should probably read, "He did, comma, and Mr. Panasidi said he was going to put them up on the weekend, comma, quote, because you don't have code enforcement on the weekend's close quote." And that was from Angie's comment, and if that is not a direct quote, we can take those quotations off of there. Angie?
Quoter, not Richard. It was a while ago. I think the quotes are fine.
Okay. So that's my change. Is that good? Okay, that's it.
Just an FYI, those banners were flying again yesterday in front of the development, for the record. With those changes, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Williams. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks very much. Which brings us quickly on to our four public hearings this evening. Just for the record, for the public's information, item 6D, we will be holding one public hearing for our FY20 budget tax levy and assessment, so you will not have to go through the painstaking process of listening to 10 separate public hearings as we adopt our tax levies and assessments. With that said, we will start with item 6A, which is consideration of a request from 519 Skiles Place LLC for a conditional use permit to construct 54 apartments in two buildings located at 519 Skiles Place. The property is Zone WR4, which is our high-density multifamily residential, and this will be WCUP 19-08, a continuation from the August 5th, 2019 public hearing. And I'll turn it back to council for discussion. In order to keep the meeting moving efficiently, I would entertain a motion either way, and then we'll debate that motion and take it from there. Katie?
I would move to approve resolution. Wow, I just lost my...
It's actually not a resolution.
Yeah, I know. A little, little. Let me take a deep breath here. I move to approve WCUP 19-08, and I can speak to it if I get a second.
Motion on the table for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman. Katie?
Neighborhood, I get it. Growth is a pain. It's hard. When it is in your backyard, it's hard when we have so many people in town in the middle of the summer. The fact of the matter is, is that we changed this zoning designation specifically to WR4 and listed it within the Wisconsin Corridor Plan to be developed as such. We looked for facts, findings of facts to deny. We heard all of the public comment, most of which I agree with. But I cannot deem it as a justification to deny this based on the criteria that we have set forth for finding, to approve this project, unfortunately. The fact of the matter is that we're in Whitefish where people want to live. We're growing, the Flathead Valley is growing. And with that comes infill. And this is a project that supports infill. And in good conscience, I would want to know that I'm voting on a project based on the criteria set forth within our zoning code and making sure that the project meets that criteria. And when looking at the findings of fact for denial, I cannot in good faith find that it's a strong enough case for denial, and so that is why I have to vote to support this project.
Thank you, Katie. Further discussion from the council or comments. Ryan?
I would agree with Katie. I can't in good faith either deny this project on the record as it stands. I think in Whitefish, we have a workforce housing issue, and we need to figure out how we're going to decide it. And I don't remember who it was, but someone up here said that we're not going to single-family home our way out of this problem. Density is going to have to be part of the solution. And for people that don't know me, so, I work for the Public Defender's Office for the state, and I travel around to a lot of different places in Montana, Sanders County, Lincoln County, Lake County, and I see a lot of towns, you know, towns that I grew up going to, that I still like visiting, like Eureka, and Libby, and Troy, and Ronan, and Plains, and Hot Springs. And it makes me feel ever fortunate to live in a town where people want to be, and where people want to live. And I sympathize with the people in the neighborhood, but like I said before, I, the way this is before me, I can't in good faith reject it, so I will be supporting Katie's motion.
Thank you, Ryan. Further comments on the motion. Richard?
Sure. I went back and took another good look at the traffic study, and I feel that there are some major flaws, if you don't mind, in the traffic study, starting on page 115. It's recognized that the study was done in April with some updates in September. It doesn't say when in September, whether that was early in September, late in September. So, and the comparison for adjusting those volumes was, the best data was off of Highway 2 outside of Kalispell. And that fails to really recognize, I think, the issue on Skiles and on Wisconsin. If you look on page 116 as well, there's a paragraph on planned road improvements. That paragraph is misleading at best, in my view, and it conflates both the responsibilities of the city with those of the state, making this sound like it's perhaps the city's issue much more than it is the state's issue, and that somehow or rather, the city is at fault. And I find, as I said, that is at best misleading. If you go into the traffic study itself further, when it looks at the counts, the traffic data, and looking at, let's see, I'm on page 124, and it says, "Total vehicle traffic, car traffic, vehicle traffic," and then it says vehicle traffic again. And I see that, you know, but the times appear to be the same. They don't seem to be a different time. And I don't know whether, what kind of vehicle traffic is segregated there, to be sure. But if I go back to the previous page, where it says, on page 123, "Total vehicle traffic, car traffic, truck traffic, bicycle traffic," and then pedestrian volumes, and it says, "There is no pedestrian volume, period. There is no data." And about three weeks ago, I took the opportunity to sit down under a tree at that corner at 5:10 PM until almost 6 o'clock in the evening, and I noticed that there is a considerable amount of both bicycle and pedestrian traffic on Skiles, on Wisconsin, and crossing the street at the designated crosswalk. And I think that that's, I don't remember the name of that cross street where the law office is, but, is that Woodland Place? And so there was a lot of both youth and adult bicycle traffic, as well as pedestrian traffic using that crosswalk. I was pleased to see, however, that people were using that crossing area and not crossing right in front of Skiles. So I, just based on the inadequacy and the, my reading of the traffic study and how it was derived, I'm not going to vote for approval.
Thank you, Richard. Further comments from the council. Melissa?
This is definitely a very difficult decision to make. You know, one thing I keep thinking about is, it's hard not to turn on the news and see every week something about the housing crisis in this country, and that people don't have places to live. It would be nice if we could just say, "Too bad, you got to find somewhere else." But the population's growing. People want to live here. It's a beautiful place. It's a desirable place. You know, choosing that particular location, one, it's infill. Two, it would hopefully encourage pedestrian traffic versus hopping into your car if it was on a highway. You know, I realize growth is happening here way faster than anybody would want it to. I wish I could change that and had control of that, but I don't. I made some other notes here. Hold on. You know, it's complying with the zoning. While it might not feel right, you know, we are a nation of laws, and that's the code that we have here. I am concerned, you know, that there aren't deed restrictions for affordability. It's great that it's affordable now. I hope it would stay that way. I know they're smaller units, so that speaks to, in favor of that prospect. I don't know if there are any other deed restrictions possible, like for, you know, that it could be deed restricted for local workers or residents or anything like that. That would certainly make it more palatable. But, you know, and I will also concur with Katie and Ryan's comments. I'm leaning towards approving it because, again, of the things that I've mentioned, so.
Thanks, Melissa. Further comments from the council? I had a question for Public Works, or Richard or Frank, since you are representatives on the planning board. Just thumbing through the packet real quickly, was there an added condition to require bicycle racks at the development?
There were two additional conditions. One was bicycle racks at or near the entrances, and the second one was an onsite...
Manager?
Manager.
Okay. Thank you. Melissa?
I just want to make a couple other comments, because this shows up in the news as well. Two of the biggest impediments and two of the biggest reasons that we have these housing crises across the country have to do with not in my backyard, and, what's the other one? Neighborhood character. And across the country, people use those, and I get it. I would love to keep things just the way they are, put a bubble around Whitefish and just maintain. But I just put that out there for people to think about, that that has, as wonderful it is to protect character, I feel like we have to try and find a way to do that, but also accommodate the fact that housing is a real issue, and not just in Whitefish, but the entire country.
Thanks, Melissa. Further comments from the council. Richard?
Since we have a motion and a second, would you like to have those friendly amendments for those two additional conditions, even though I've said I'd probably vote against it?
I would like to have those, and we'll have to vote on those before the original motion for approval.
Right. So I'll go ahead and make those motions now, if I may?
Thank you.
First motion is that bicycle racks at or near each entrance will be provided.
Is there a second to that friendly condition?
I'll second.
Further discussion, which will be condition number 10 of approval. Is that correct? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously to add friendly condition number 10 regarding bicycle racks. Richard?
Friendly condition number 11, that the proponent will provide an onsite manager at all times, 24/7, for this project.
Is there a second to that friendly amendment, which will be condition number 11?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion on the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously for added condition number 11, requiring an onsite manager at all times, which takes us back to the original motion. Is there any further comment before we take a vote? Andy?
I suppose I better say something, as long as I'm the one that got us here two weeks later in another hour and a half's worth of time. I'm going to vote against it, and I can certainly understand why the motion to approve was made, and I can certainly understand why those who are going to support it will in fact support it. And I can certainly understand why the neighborhood is adamantly opposed to it and doesn't want to see it. Part of the reason for my motion was to see if we could actually come back with a set of findings that would support a denial, and I am comfortable that those in fact do that. As usual, I can agree with about 50% of what Sean says, so it's, can't always discount everything he says, because he is a really bright guy. And he's a good friend, so I have to say that. But anyway, I think that, I'm also going to say that I'm not naive enough to understand that they can't just come back tomorrow with a building permit application for a 54-unit building, and they might would have to wait for a year for a conditional use permit reapplication, but not for a building permit. They could come in on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday and be digging a hole in literally a matter of weeks if everything moves smoothly. So I do understand that. But I think that, I have heard what the neighborhood says, and I do understand what the neighborhood, and I think that part of the comparisons to the Wisconsin Avenue project, the pit, as I prefer to call it, rather than the quarry, because it was Ad Clark's old gravel pit, that is a very different project. I don't think it's fair to make comparisons on that. There were a number of different things that happened there. One, that dumps out onto the state highway, doesn't dump onto a city street. We did require additional right-of-way dedication on the west side of the road there for an eventual left-hand turn lane. There were a lot of things that we could mitigate there. It's a commercial zone. It doesn't butt up to a single-family residential neighborhood. It's a very different project. So I'm comfortable that we can deny, and I'm comfortable in voting against it. But as I said, I'm fully understanding why we would want to vote for it if we think that it's adequate housing and in the right place.
Thank you, Andy. Further comment on the motion as amended. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign. And I'll vote in favor of the motion, and the motion carries on a four-to-three vote, with Councilors Katie Williams, Melissa Hartman, and Ryan Henin voting in favor, Counselor Hildner, Andy Fury, and Frank Sweeney voting in opposition. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at about quarter of nine. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at about quarter of nine.
Richard, there's a gentleman. I just told Ben. There's a gentleman who's starting a glass. Richard, there's a gentleman. I just told Ben. There's a gentleman who's starting a glass. His name is Fish, I think? Fish, I don't know. He's a ski coach up on the mountain. Is Sherry going at the same time? Yeah, he's starting recycling businesses.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order, and we'll move on to item 6B, which will be resolution number 19-17, establishing a new fee schedule for the after-school early day or early release days. Maria?
Good evening. In February of this year, you all unanimously approved our new fee schedule for the FY '20 recreation programs, and part of that was our after-school program fees. They went from $10 a day for scholarship applicants, they are $10 a day for scholarship applicants, $15 a day for residents, and $25 a day for non-residents. After-school runs from whenever they release children from their classes, which ranges between 3:10 and 3:30 until the 5:30 pickup time. This year, Whitefish School District has revised their schedule to allow for early release days on most Wednesdays throughout the school year. Essentially, if it's a full week of school, then they will do an early release on a Wednesday, and that happens 29 Wednesdays throughout the school year. They will release children from 2:10 to 2:30, as opposed to the typical 3:10 to 3:30, which then adds an hour of after-school time to our program. The average hourly rate for a program is around $6 an hour. So in order to accommodate the extra hour of staff time, we're proposing an increase of $5 for early release days to each of the fees. That would increase the scholarship fee from $10 to 15, the resident fee from 15 to 20, and the non-resident from 25 to 30. This is an average cost of around $145 per year per person if you were to have your child attend each of those Wednesdays. If the city were to assume that cost, assuming that we averaged 40 children per day, it would cost the city $5,800 per year if we did not impose the increase. We did advertise for this public hearing, and we sent email notifications to all families who have been in our after-school programs in the past. On August 13th, the Park Board unanimously approved this recommendation, and this does not require any financial resources to approve this. So if you have no further questions for me, I would recommend adoption of this resolution.
Thanks, Maria. Any questions for Maria on our staff report? Richard?
No questions, but I'll move to approve the resolution 19...
Seventeen?
Seventeen. A resolution of the City of Whitefish, Montana, to establish a new fee schedule for after-school early release days.
Richard, we do need to hold a public hearing before we can have a motion.
I'm sorry. There's just so many people out there.
We did advertise for a public hearing, and we'll hold a public hearing now on item 6B, which will be resolution 19-17. Any public comment this evening? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Richard, take two.
I just couldn't... We just played the tape back. I would move to approve resolution 18-17, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Whitefish, Montana, to establish a new fee schedule for after-school early release days.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Which will be resolution 19-17. Further discussion on the motion? Andy?
Just one note. I'd like to record to show that during public hearing that Rebecca Norton did give us a one thumbs up in the audience.
Question, and maybe you can't answer this, but I was with my nephew, buying him a new skateboard yesterday. He turned 13, and he couldn't answer the question, but why early release? Is this a new program?
It's to give their teacher training more time. So teachers will remain in school, and it's for collaborative efforts with their teachers.
Okay. That makes sense.
It's nothing new. It's just that the frequency is a little higher than in the past.
Didn't realize that. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously, which brings us on to item 6C of the agenda, which will be resolution 19-18, amending the 2019 fiscal year annual budget to increase appropriations in five funds of the city. Dana?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this will be one of the first steps we take before looking at our fiscal year '20 budget, is to look at our fiscal year '19 budget and see what we've done, funds that maybe have expenditures that exceeded the appropriations. However, note that these increases were known at the time that the expenditure was made and were deemed reasonable. So I'm just going to run through them real quickly. We have the resort tax fund. We have collected more than originally budgeted. And what that means is the percentage that goes to Haskell Basin's debt service payments, we actually have to transfer that to our water fund. Well, because we collected a significant amount more than budgeted, we're only allowed to budget what we collect the prior year. That estimate obviously was exceeded, so we had to transfer more funds. It was simply just the transfer that caused that, as well as there was... That was the majority of it, but there was a portion of it that had to do with the Riverside Improvement Project and City Beach Restrooms. That was a budgeting error on my part, not caring over those projects like I should have. We've made adjustments in the fiscal year '20 budget to account for that for other projects. So that will be $83,975 in total. The Fire and Ambulance Fund, we've discussed that earlier tonight at your work session about Medicaid and Medicare write-offs for our ambulance billing. Those are a significant portion of our write-offs, and they exceeded the budget by $283,730. We've made that adjustment, and it was able to use unanticipated revenues as a source to cover those costs, as well as fund balance reserves. So the fund did finish the year with positive cash balance, regardless of that significant dollar change. Then we have the gas tax, the new gas tax, actually, the roads, streets, and bridge fund. That one, we actually did have some startup costs in fiscal year '19. We hadn't assumed that we would, but we did get going on that project. So those were just incurred in fiscal year '19 instead of in fiscal year '20, but we wanted that project to get rolling as soon as possible. So that is, with funds on hand that we actually had, restricted for that project. So we just need to increase appropriations by $25,975. And then Parkland Acquisition and Development Fund, we did not budget any expenditures in that fund for fiscal year '19, but there were some projects that came up during the year that were deemed appropriate for these funds. One was the Armory Improvement Project in the East District. We had some startup costs. That's one where we've applied for a grant. We were awarded the grant, maybe? Not yet. We haven't heard yet, but one that we've applied for the grant and have a big master plan for that park. So this included some of the startup costs there, as well as some other costs in the West District. So that was $9,345. Those are all covered by either revenue, unanticipated revenues or fund balances required by state laws. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, staff recommends that City Council approve the resolution amending the 2019 fiscal year annual budget.
Thanks, Dana. Any questions for Dana on the resolution? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be resolution 19-18. Is there any public comment this evening? Next, Adam. Rebecca. No problem. Is there any public comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion, preferably. Andy?
I would move that we approve resolution 19-18, which is the 2019 year fiscal annual year budget to increase appropriations in four funds, not five funds, as stated in the agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hennan. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign. And that motion carries unanimously as well. Michelle? We will move on to item 6D of our agenda, which is our FY '20 budget adoption along with our tax levy, levy, excuse me, and assessments. We will be having one public hearing that will cover resolutions 19-19 through 19-28, and then we'll take public comment after I've provided Adam the opportunity to walk through the FY '20 budget, which is resolution 19-19, as well as 20 through 28, which are our levies and assessments. Adam?
Okay. Well, we just actually met during the work session on the budget updates from last year, or from, excuse me, I'm still in fiscal year '19, since the proposed preliminary budget. So some of the bigger changes that have occurred include the taxable value. We have the updated rate that we received from the state on Monday. They didn't come in as high as expected, but we were able to adjust the budget to meet, to find ways to absorb that reduction in property tax revenue. The only big change for taxpayers in general is that they're going to see about a 5.21% increase in their tax bill from the city, including property tax revenue and assessments. That's actually lower than we originally proposed, which was at 5.47%. This budget does provide for 3.58% increase in our property tax revenue, and there are assessment increases for our maintenance districts. Stormwater will now increase by $15 per parcel. We have CPI increases for the majority of our other maintenance districts. The Park Maintenance District, we did increase by 6.2% to help continue addressing the capital needs of that department. We also have a CPI this year of 3.1%, so all employees are due a 4% pay increase. We do have two unions that right now are still under negotiations for fiscal year '20, one that's actually still negotiating for fiscal year '19, but we have provided the necessary budget authority for both of those unions to have back pay when ready. We, last year and this year, we've implemented a cap of 4% for pay increases. So in prior years, had we used our original formula prior to Adam coming on board, it would have been a 5.1% increase. So it's nice to see that we're starting to address, when we have higher CPIs, that while employees, I'm sure, would love 5.1%, it's really hard to sustain. So we're working toward making that a reasonable increase as we can. The biggest change for this budget compared to last year is our capital improvements that we are completing. We've had a significant increase in our expenditures, as you can see within the budget, but most of that is due to the wastewater treatment plant, as well as the water treatment plant, Depot Park Improvement Project, Resort Tax State Park Road. We actually did increase that budget by about $1 million. That was due to the timing. In talking to Craig at year end, we decided we wanted to have adequate budget authority. The project itself is still the same estimated cost, but we moved about $1 million of that into fiscal year '20 and reduced fiscal year '21, which you'll see later in the CIP, by that $1 million. So overall, still the same cost. We have the funds available, but we wanted to make sure that we could get the work done that we needed to when Phase 2 starts up. So we do have some additional staffing in this budget. One is a full-time police officer to really help the department in patrol activities and investigations. Obviously, we're growing, so the demand on their department has increased. That position, though, will not start until January 1st, and it's going to cost about $39,000 for that half-year. Obviously, next year, you're going to look at the full cost of the position. We have additional seasonal staffing for a downtown maintenance and cleaning person, and that is in conjunction with Heart of Whitefish, who will contribute for that position to help clean sidewalks. Obviously, we have visitors that enjoy our downtown, but we want to make sure that the city is looking clean. And then we also have additional staffing for the AIS decontamination Station near City Beach. So overall, the budget as proposed originally has remained fairly steady. We continue to identify our cash reserves, increasing those from 14.76% last year to 15.29% this year. We also are addressing the capital needs, as you can see why our budget has increased significantly. And then we are still making strides to address unfunded liabilities through budgeting when we can for individuals that will be retiring. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you, but would like to thank all the department directors, the city council, all the public. You know, hopefully, one day, we'll get more public input. But you know, that helps make this project, for me, it's a significant project, but makes it possible, and taking the time to really understand what we're doing and the projects we're trying to address with these increases. So, Adam?
Thanks, Dana, very much. Adam?
I just also wanted to thank Dana. She spends countless hours poring over these numbers. And I mean, there are thousands and thousands of entries and formulas and spreadsheets talking to one another from one form to another and everything else, and she keeps it all straight. And so she's just done a fantastic job, so.
Thanks, Adam, and a big shout-out to you, Dana. I know you did the lion's share of the budget preparation with help from your directors. I know you did the lion's share of the budget preparation with help from your directors, and it's very much appreciated and acknowledged by the council. So thank you very much. I will need a motion adopting Resolutions 19-19. Excuse me, we will hold a public hearing even though there's no public hearing. Sorry Rebecca. On our FY '20 budget, tax levy and assessments, any public comment? Please approach the podium in your name and address for the record, please. Rebecca?
Rebecca Norton, 530 Scott Avenue, and it is kind of common not to have a lot of people at the budget hearings over the years, but Dana, you always know everything I ask you. Thank you. I just have a special request. I live down by Whitefish River, and it's near the footbridge at Riverside Park, and it's eroding horribly on the sides. Last year at this time, I asked for capital improvement funds to fix that, and nothing happened, so I'll just keep showing up every year to ask for money to fix it because it's getting dangerous. I was trying to find Riley Palumbas, she's my neighbor, to come too because she has two golden retrievers, and they were playing on the, on the top of the bank on the north side with some kids, and one kid actually got rolled all the way down the bank to the riverside, and then another on the south side, people are, it's getting so steep that just getting kayaks down is really dangerous, and so some people are working on it. I think Greg Gunderson might have a small amount of money to do the north side, but I talked to Dana, and this is how it would be funded if we were going to do some kind of improvement. That is the custrian soil. We've had two slumpages right at the curve there already, so I just think it would be nice to have it fixed before it's too late and it's not usable if it's not safe, because it is city property. So my request is to someone add it to the capital improvement budget for the next year, if not this year. Maybe two-hundred-and-fifty thousand would be good. I don't really know, but I'm thinking every year you wait, it will be more expensive. Thank you.
Thanks Rebecca. I think you were one of the few here last year when we adopted our budget, so thanks for participating, it's appreciated. Any further public comments? Go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion on Resolutions 19-19 through 19-28.
I have a comment first, if I may.
Richard?
On page 201, this is the section on Climate Action Plan Implementation Goals. It's the second page, it's the second paragraph. Planning and Building Department, about two-thirds of the way down. Landscaping and Tree Retention Ordinances will be reviewed by staff with a recommendation to, among other things, require drought rather than draft resistant plants. If we could make that grammatical correction, I think it, unless somebody was going to have a draft, so. I don't think that should stand in the way of approval, however.
Great. I had a quick question before a motion, please. Dana, in the budget summary spreadsheet that we reviewed during the work session, one thing that caught my attention was the delta between what we projected to be our preliminary budget, beginning available cash estimate for the water and wastewater enterprise funds versus what our actual beginning available cash is. I mean, for, you know, water, for example, it's eight-hundred thousand dollars more than we preliminarily estimated, and for wastewater, one point one-five million. I was just curious, is that simply due to increased collections from our rates, or can you explain that?
So it's going to be an impact of both. So it, one, it's just where, where the revenue comes in if it's higher than projected. There's the revenue side, there's the expenditure side also, which tends to be the one that I'm a lot worse at projecting at times because of capital projects. You know, our fiscal year end happens to be middle of construction season. It'd be great if it was December 31st because we would not have construction. So trying to determine where they're at with, say, the South Whitefish Storage Project, all of their other projects they have going on, it's kind of hard to determine that. The thing is that some of that fund, that some of those funds, though, were appropriate actually in fiscal year 20 after the preliminary budget, so you'll, you would see an increase in some of their projects, and some of it is just, you know, even operating costs that they save on, but I try to be conservative and assume the worst, because I really don't like those numbers being negative. I'd rather be off by the, the five-hundred-to-million-dollar range for those funds specifically, when you're talking about funds that have seven million dollars in the bank. I'd rather be off that instead of having to come up when we have a shortfall in cash. Important parts to note is when you do, when we look at rate increases for both those funds, we're not using those projections at all, we're using actual figures. So as you get later on this evening, you'll hear from Craig about a rate proposal, they use actual figures.
Okay. Great. Thanks for the explanation. Motion?
I will move to approve Resolution 19-19 through Resolution 19-28.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seceded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? Andy?
Thank you, everyone, as always. I am concerned with all of our new taxable value ultimately getting rolled into existing taxable value, and I think that whatever we can do as staff, and certainly as a council, and one thing I would suggest that we possibly do is a letter from the mayor to the governor. I think maybe if we go right to the top, and I realize he's outrun for president, but I assume there's somebody minding the store currently, but I think just dealing with MDR is probably not a bad, but I think if there's some other people farther up the chain that are at least kind of looking at it, so if, I would suggest if it's fine with the council that Dana draft that letter, the mayor sign it, because I think Dana probably understands it better than the mayor, and the mayor's really smart, but I think that...
Most likely.
Yeah. But Dana could probably better do that, and I would suggest that we do that, because I think it's in our best interest, because it sounds like that's a possibility that could happen, and it maybe has happened in the past, and, and then also suggesting future legislation to rectify the problem in coming years. So that's my only comment.
Happy to sign. Everyone in favor of drafting that letter? Richard?
I had this in for, written down for counselor comments, but perhaps this is the appropriate place to mention it. Dana, at the work session, you said that the budget directors of the county and the three municipalities get together on a regular basis, and that one of the topics is going to be this particular issue, and I'm wondering if it might not be a good idea to also, at that, at one of these, and sooner perhaps rather than later, ask our legislators, both from the Senate and the House, to join you so they can sit in and appreciate the issue that you're dealing with. So I think it might be a, a nice communication tool.
Yeah, we plan to have, well, we're working on dates, but it should be this first part of September that we'll, we'll be meeting, and I like that idea. The nice thing to hear is that the city managers or county administrator, they're all aware of the same issue, and they're all on board, so I think we already have the local government support, so bringing in the legislator is a good idea.
Yeah, I think as long as you are all unanimous, I think that that sends a very strong message to our elected officials. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard. Further comments on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? We will move on to Item 7A of our agenda, Communications from our Public Works Director. Item A, consideration to award the Central Avenue and Sixth Street Improvement Project. Craig?
Okay. Good evening. Three quick items from Public Works. No public hearings, though, so feel free to make motions at will. We'll kind of roll through these pretty quickly. First one begins on page 353, it's the Central Avenue Project, and as I'm sure you're all aware, we spent some considerable amount of time over the last year working on this final phase of the Central Avenue Project. This phase includes vehicular drainage, parking and pedestrian improvements along East Sixth Street from Spokane to Central, as well as resurfacing of Central Avenue between Fifth and Sixth Street. Several alternatives have been considered for this project, and based on concerns expressed by residents of Business Owners Council, approved the recommendation of staff to proceed with an option that does preserve two-way traffic on this section of roadway. By reducing the pavement down to 22 feet along the curve and bringing the guardrail closer to the edge of pavement, we are able to reduce the amount of weight on the slump and bring this section of roadway down about six feet. We'll also be painting sheroes in both directions, which will incorporate bike traffic with the, with the vehicles, improving the way that we can manage biking and walking pedestrians. While the solution will not eliminate future roadway maintenance or the soil instability, it does strike a balance, I believe, in meeting the needs of the neighborhood and improving existing safety concerns. So plans were finalized for design last month and advertised for bids. We received an open bid on August 6th and received two. LHC and Sandry. LHC was the low bidder at two-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Sandry came in just about thirty thousand dollars higher at three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. The total budget for the project in FY '21 is three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and we have just about forty thousand in engineering to remain, to complete the project. So looks like I will be able to bring this project in within budget for FY '20. So based on the guidance and direction received from council to date, the public outreach conducted and the results of the bidding process, it's my recommendation that council award the Sixth Avenue and Sixth Street Improvement Project to LHC in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and twenty-three cents, and the city manager be authorized to execute the contract.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions for Adam on his staff report? Richard?
With regards to sheroes, I know that this is diagrammatic, where you have them placed on the diagram on page 356, is it? And I think that when you get to that point, if the sheroes are at the junction of Spokane and Central, then again at mid-curve, and then ending, the last shero being right where that driveway is, where the bike path drops back down to the river. And this last weekend, I was in Ashland, Oregon, and it was interesting, I have a picture, and I'll send it to you, of how they dealt with sheroes in the middle of a main street, which was very similar to our Central Avenue, and how they painted those, which were very, I thought, cleverly done.
Excellent. Yeah, that makes sense.
Frank?
Just one other comment, Craig. This is a difficult area. Do we, is part of this program to effectively reduce the weight load, or are we going to restrict the kinds and sizes of vehicles that can go and use this section of Central and Sixth?
You know, we haven't discussed the opportunity to restrict this to no truck traffic, but that's something that council could definitely do. We typically bring those up as projects are completed. It is designed to support truck traffic, but of course, any reduction in loading that we can do along the roadway will help to, you know, preserve the surface and reduce the slump, so I would support that, and we could come back as, at a future council meeting with a separate motion to do so.
I, for one, would entertain that. I think it'd be fiscally the right thing to do. If we're going to invest this money, we might, might as well get it to last as long as we can. That section of Central, even if it were configured to the regular width, still would be a problem for trucks to navigate anyway, and there are other access points that they could use, so I think it would be an appropriate thing for us to consider. Just me.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd just leave it up to council as to whether or not you'd want to incorporate that with this motion. Typically, on a change like that, I'd probably want to do some advertisement, so if there's objection to it, people would have an opportunity to come speak.
I'm not sure, why would it change our, anything we have to do with this particular bid or project? My, my thought is that whatever they're going to design, even if it's designed to hold trucks, we may take a different perspective and say, it may be designed to hold it, but we're not going to do that, just to preserve it and ensure that we're not going to have this slump problem for a longer period of time.
Sure.
I'm just, that's all I'm suggesting.
Would you like that included as part of a motion this evening, or a future date?
Future date. I mean, I would like Craig to come back with a recommendation for that, if that's what he thinks would preserve that roadway, and I'd be, I would entertain it, is what I'm saying.
My only concern with moving forward with the recommendation from Craig, and I think you understand this, is the considerable public comment and outreach that the city undertook for this project. I mean, this was largely driven by the council, but also the business owners, you know, on Central Avenue, in particular 93 and the intersection there, Remax, et cetera, so I would hope that any recommendation gets well-vetted before it gets to our, gets to our desk, if you don't mind, Craig.
Yeah. We will be having one final, it won't be a public meeting, but we'll be doing a, a final mailing on this project, assuming the, the project's awarded, and it could be mentioned in that so we could gather feedback.
Sure. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Frank. We will need a motion. Ryan?
I would move that the Central Avenue and Sixth Street Improvement Project be awarded to LHC Inc. in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and twenty-three cents, and the city manager be authorized to execute the contract.
I'll second.
Thanks, Ryan. That was seconded by Counselor Williams. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. We'll go ahead and stay with Craig and move on to Item 7B, for the council's consideration to begin utility rate hearing process consistent with MCA 69-7-111. Craig?
Thank you very much. Beginning on page 360 of your packet, the City of Whitefish provides water and sewer service for approximately 3,500 customers. That's both residential and commercial, inside and outside of city limits, and it's recommended that municipalities complete a comprehensive rate study every three to five years, or if a major change to utility operations are planned. Meeting both of these criteria, the City of Whitefish did retain AE2S to complete a water and wastewater financial plan and rate structure study back in May of 2015, and the first rate increase from this study went into effect in October of 2016. The study involved a cost-of-service analysis, or COSA, to measure the attributable, attributable costs of each user class against the actual amount of revenue provided by each user class. The results demonstrate the difference between cost and revenue, and were used to develop a recommended rate approach. Since that time, significant capital needs for water have been identified, and a final funding arrangement for the wastewater treatment plan has been solidified. So as a result, the city's worked with AE2S over the past couple of months on updating the rate models for both water and wastewater that were developed as part of the 2015 project. After updating the models with the help of AE2S, we've, we have a revised set of recommended rates from those that were determined from the rate study. Those are up on the screen for you right now. Thank you, Michelle. And they were also distributed earlier today by Dana. The rate increases were much lower than previous years, than proposed in previous years, primarily due to growth in the number of meters and the actual flows that were billed since the completion of the rate study. In addition, the city has also secured over a million dollars in grants and loan forgiveness for the wastewater treatment project, which were rolled into the current rates. Proposed water rates include a 1% increase in the volumetric rate for all water classes and 4% for all irrigation classes. The fixed rates are proposed to remain unchanged for all water classes and most irrigation classes. You'll see that some of the irrigation classes do have an increase in the fixed fee. The proposed sewer rates include a 2% to 4% increase in the volumetric rate for most sewer classes, and fixed rates are proposed to increase by 1% for all classes. So as mentioned earlier, MCA 69-7-111 does require the council to order a public hearing when it's considering imposing any utility rate change, and based on the findings of the water... And based on the findings of the water wastewater financial plan and rate studies dated March 2016, and the recent evaluation conducted, it is our recommendation that a motion be passed to order that a public hearing be held on Monday, September 16th, 2019, to consider a rate increase based on the schedule provided in the staff report. And I can go through the dates of that schedule if you'd like, but essentially, it includes a direct mailing, three publications, and then the actual hearing on Monday, September 16th.
Great. Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig on his staff report? Richard?
I'll make a motion to order the beginning of a utility rate hearing process consistent with MCA 69-7-111, as found on page 360 of the packet, with a public hearing to be held on Monday, September 16th, at the regularly scheduled city council meeting of 2019.
Is there a second to the motion?
How'd they do?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman. Further discussion on the motion? That was entertaining. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and the motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to item 7C, which will be our own resolution 19-29, committing $2 million in local funds as part of our cost-share match for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project. Craig?
All right. Beginning on page, where are we, 367, unfortunately, this one isn't an order, but it's still a motion, or a resolution. So here, we're talking specifically about the wastewater treatment plant and the Treasure State Endowment Program grant. In Council Resolution 18-18, the Public Works Department, sorry, as directed in Resolution 18-18, the Public Works Department did submit an application for grant funding under TSEP, and that's for the 2021 biennium, to assist in the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. The city was granted this money and notified back in May that we are now eligible to access funds, and funds we provided to communities that meet the startup conditions. One of these conditions includes the submittal of a project implementation plan, which has been completed, a budget which has been completed, and an official commitment of local matching funds. So that's what we're looking to do here. The estimated construction cost of the project is $18.7 million. The budget shows this to include construction, inspection, administration, and contingency, and includes $2 million in local funding. In order to meet the startup conditions required by TSEP, it's the recommendation of Public Works Department that council approve the enclosed resolution committing local funds of $2 million for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. I can go into more detail in the budget if you guys would like, but the gist of it is really, we're committing $2 million of our own money to get this thing done.
Thanks, Greg. Quick question I have. How confident are we in our engineer's estimate of 18.7?
You know, we just met today with Anderson Montgomery to go over the final plans. It's about a 310-page set of plans. The final cost estimate will be completed in the next week or two, but at this point, we're tracking to be right in line with that 18.7. That does include about $2 million in contingency, you know, so there's hopefully some fluctuation to go down on that number, but I'm fairly confident that we'll see bids right in and around 18 million bucks.
So we're more or less coming in on the low end of the range that we discussed a few years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
I think the range was 16 to 20, and so I'm kind of right in the middle.
Okay. And is that in part because we got the economic variance?
It's entirely in part because we got the economic variance. That allowed us to continue with the sequencing batch reactor plant that we've designed. It's also in part due to the fact that we've gone with the specific system that we have, which is a smaller footprint and less concrete and less excavation. There's some increase in capital cost for this project, but it will be the lowest long-term plant to maintain based on energy use as well. So I think we've made a lot of good decisions along the path, and I'm really optimistic that we'll be right on target with the budget.
Great. Well, I know you've done a stellar job managing what's certainly a complex project, so certainly appreciate it. And we will need a motion to the effect of Resolution 19-29. Frank?
I will move to approve Resolution 19-29, a resolution committing $2 million in local funds for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Melissa. Further discussion?
I want to just second what you said, Craig, you and your shop working so hard to make this happen the way it has. I think you've just done yeoman's work, and I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks, Greg, for those items.
If you're interested, you can read about the laws and our process, but, you know, I'll touch on the projects themselves. For this five-year span, we have 125 different projects, which total $64,782,566. More than 81.9% of those projects' costs are related to the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and the other wastewater improvements, street reconstruction projects funded by resort tax, and water improvements. So those are all rate-funded or funded by resort tax. The other projects are funded by various funding sources. It's important to know that when you look at our property tax-supported funds, we're really limited on what kind of funding sources we have available. I would request on page 6, as I read it just now, to strike a portion of paragraph 3 that says we are not at our maximum mill levy, because we are. So I would request that we strike from where it says currently the city is not at the maximum mill levy according to statutory requirements due to prior year carryover mills. However, the available increase is small when, and just cut that section out. So because we are at our max, so it actually just becomes more difficult. Now, as in prior years, though, we're lucky that we have a very successful TIF district that will be sunsetting next year. So in this plan, it identifies $255,000 of the estimated 1.4, that number can be updated here shortly with our new taxable values, but we'll just say 1.4 for now, that $255,000 has been allocated to the court, administration, police, fire, and Parks and Rec departments to help fund their capital improvements. So again, with any planning document, we obviously monitor the progress toward completing these projects, and we make adjustments to it on an annual basis. So if you have any questions about specific projects, each department is detailed in here. Fiscal year '20 matches the fiscal year '20 budget that you adopted earlier, and so it would be fiscal year '21 through '24 that are still projects that are out in the future that if you have questions on, we'd be happy to answer. So staff requests that you adopt the CIP for years '20, '20 through '24.
Thanks, Dana. Any questions for Dana or any of the directors for that matter regarding the five-year CIP? Frank?
Dana and Craig, I don't have a problem here, but I think it's kind of interesting that our wastewater estimates or capital cost is 19 million, and yet water is going to be 23. I would have flipped those, and I'm just curious as to why water seems to be, because given what I've understood heretofore, we're going to spend a lot more money on wastewater than we were water. Am I missing something here?
I think it's the $7 million for the storage tanks out of town. That's a big number.
Yeah. Okay. I was just thinking of improvements to the water treatment plant that we talked about.
Yeah, no, what we're showing in the...
In the five-year CIP is, you know, roughly $18 million for both of those projects, for the expansion up at the plant, as well as the south storage and production. That 7.6 does include the possibility of adding groundwater to the system as well. And so it's not yet been determined if both of those projects are going to be completed, but nonetheless, that's what we're currently tracking at for those two. So I'm not sure where the 23 million...
Total.
Oh, okay.
So in total, over the five years, you're investing more.
It's the cumulative impact.
Okay. Including all the capital equipment replacement and everything. Right. Yeah, so obviously, the big ones there are roughly that $18 million for expansion of the plant, a new water tank, and potentially, a new groundwater source.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to tag on to that, why they're different, because they're both $18 million, really is the cast iron water main improvements over five years, about 2.3 million, if not more, or 2.2, I don't have my paper in front of me. That's to help continue to address water loss. So that's one of the things, we got to reinvest in our water utility to make sure we can address water loss.
I concur. I agree with all of you.
Further questions for Dana? I had one, and maybe, I guess, Chief Page is in here, Danny, you might need to tackle this, or Adam, for that matter, but I couldn't help but notice the estimated cash balance remaining for capital projects for the fire department. When we look at FY '21 through FY '24, at the end of '24, we're at a deficit of $1.8 Adam?
That doesn't take into account the growth in their mill rate that they're going to see at the close of the TIF, and the additional monies that we're going to be allocating from the TIF sunsetting to theirs. So if you look at those next lines down, it does bring them into the black. So we're just kind of showing you, here's if we just left things as they are, and here's after we take some corrective measures. But also, too, I mean, we're working on that long-range plan for the fire department, and some of that is going to have to take into account some increases coming from the fire service area.
So this assumes about 10% to 15% of our increased property tax revenue when the TIF sunsets is going to be allocated to the fire department for capital improvements on an annual basis?
I think it's more like 7%.
7.
Yeah. And that's where that $100,000 comes from, that extra 264, well, I'm looking at the far right column, 238 in FY '21. That is just the increase in the 24 mills that they currently have allocated to the fire department.
But when we look at our increase in property tax revenue after the TIF sunsets and you subtract out staff's allocation, because we're all, you know, billing a portion of your salaries to the TIF.
Yep, yep.
After that, we have more like 800 to 900,000 to play with.
It's about a million.
It's about a million.
Yep. So of that, they would be taking about 10% of that, yes.
Okay. I imagine we'll talk more about this at our long-range planning committee meetings. But thanks for that explanation. Further questions?
You know, real quick, Joan, I wanted to put some kudos in to Craig and his crew. One of the questions I had for Craig today was, have we hit the DEQ's, what they call capacity, which is three of our four treatment trains? And we have not. So I think Craig said we've hit a maximum of 2,850,000 gallons per day, and I think last year, it was much, much more than that, which kind of got the DEQ kind of riled up about a few things that we've had to straighten them out on. And so far this year, we have not done so, and that is all because of the cast iron main replacement that we've been doing, the water ordinances, and I just think they've been doing a bang-up job, and they've been able to keep things in check.
Right. In terms of how the, just out of curiosity, how the CIP's authored, is it a collaborative effort, obviously, between the department directors and yourself and Dana, Adam, or how does this document pull together?
So just like with the regular budget, we ask all the department directors to submit their capital improvements as well, and so we're trying to do it all at once, whereas before, they used to come in after the fact, and then they were just like, well, here's how much you have left over. But I think by treating it as part of the actual budget, we can keep things in the black by doing that, where we're not always trying to play catch-up, where we can make some allocations during the budget cycle to make sure that we're floating our capital improvement program. So they come forward with these requests, we go over them, I scrutinize the expenditures that they're looking to make, and so does Dana.
Great. Thanks, Adam. We will need a motion to adopt our CIP. Andy?
I would, let me find my place here. I would move that we adopt the fiscal year '20 through fiscal year '24 capital improvements program as presented.
Go ahead, Katie.
I was going to go, yeah, I second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. I don't think anyone got it on that first try. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. We'll move on to item 9A. You have Adam's written report enclosed with your packet. Any questions for Adam on his updates? Anything else to report on?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And we will move on to item 10A. We did make our appointments to volunteer boards this evening, so we'll start with Richard on counselor comments, if you have some.
Oh, I do have a list tonight. First, I am, my nose is really out of joint, with Burlington Northern Santa Fe on their lack of meaningful press releases to various media outlets and to the city with regards to the cleanup at Roundhouse Park. They have excavated hundreds of yards of apparently contaminated materials, based on what I can see, stacked in the yard, and the cover for the pile of contaminated soil only partially covers that pile, so it's still subject to a major downpour and/or drying and dust floating around the city. So I would hope that somebody, either from the city manager, the city attorney, the mayor, all of us somehow tell Burlington Northern their PR person that, at least as far as I'm concerned, that's not acceptable. I get comments and questions almost on a daily basis about what the heck is going on over there, and I say, I don't know.
Are they continuing excavation?
No, that's part of that.
I did receive a phone call last Thursday from Matt Jones, Maya, and the onsite superintendent, who indicated they would be wrapping up at the middle to end of last week.
It appears, when I looked at it last, that they have imported a great deal of soil. The project required, it looks like, the removal of several of the trees that had been established in that park, so I don't know what the rehab plan is for tree replacement. I hope that they will provide us with, and to Parks and Rec, a rehab plan dealing with tree replacement. Don't know how many cubic yards, hundreds of cubic yards, in their disposal of those contaminated soils. Do they have a plan to deal with weeds? This is the time that weed seeds start flowing around, and we've got a whole lot of bare soil that, don't know how much non-native seed is also mixed in with the soil that was imported. So I think a rehab plan, we should insist on if we're going to continue to accept and work on that lease. So that's number one. Number two, I noticed the proliferation of people riding, not walking, their bikes and skateboards on Central Avenue, and I watched an electric bike just this afternoon roaring down the sidewalk before it bounced into the traffic flow and was on about his way. That's number two. Number three, is the street cleaner project, the person who's cleaning up the streets after the big weekends, is that working? And I'll see if there's a response to that after I finish, and everybody else has had their say. Number four, the budget was calling for, particularly in the section on the Climate Action Plan for the budget, the electric bikes, and therefore, one would assume, bike patrol. the electric bikes, and therefore, one would assume, bike patrol. Is that, I'd like to hear from the chief or someone about whether or not that has occurred, or is, or will take place. Number five, thanks to Dana, Adam, and directors for working on the budget adjustments. I know that was a Herculean effort. And finally, number six, it's been brought up before, but Rebecca reminded me and all of us this evening, we do have an erosion problem on the bridge abutments at Riverside Park on the footbridge, and if we could somehow get a handle on that, kids are still jumping off the bridge. I don't know why, because the river's not that deep, but every time they do, of course, they splash back up the bank, and it's, becomes a muddy slip and slide. So that's all for now.
Do you want feedback on any of those points?
I would like feedback, but if staff wants to do it now or after the-
Why don't we go ahead and take care of your business first, and then we'll go down the line here?
Okay.
Maybe-
I'll take Riverside.
Riverside.
I don't want a street cleaner. So we did work with, I'm not sure which company Greg Gunderson did it under, I believe it was Forestoration, but we asked him to take a look at, Foresturation and the Center for Native Plants both worked on the original landscape plan for the Riverside Bridge. Most of that work was taken out of the contract just because of the cost of the bridge. We did ask him to come back and take a look. He put together a plan, and the cost estimate for that work is just about twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're going to kind of examine that over the course of the next year and determine whether or not that should be proposed for a future budget.
Okay. That's one.
I'll take the street cleaner. We did, we have been consistently advertising for that position. We've interviewed a few individuals, offered the position to a couple. One took us up on it and worked for two days, and then informed us that that was not the position for that person. So we don't have an individual who is currently hired to do the downtown cleaner position. So the park staff on, we do have an individual who works on Sundays. That person is taking care of garbage and has been getting overtime on Saturdays in order to pick up the garbage, but is not also cleaning the street, just doing the garbage pickup.
All right. Thank you.
Richard, your question?
Are we doing bike patrol?
Yes, and the plan to purchase, it looked like, electric-assist bicycles was in the budget.
We've purchased two already, and we, yes, we are doing bike patrol when we have enough personnel available, and that's about it.
Okay. How about who's going to handle Burlington Northern Santa Fe?
I reached out to Maya on Friday because I wanted to send out something in my Friday email, and that was all she could find out. So I'm hoping she's doing some more digging because it was basically just one sentence, that they were going to continue excavating, and hopefully find where it's coming from. I've heard from a couple people that have been on the down, the river recently, that there still was a sheen as of last week. Is that, have you, has anyone else noticed that? So-
I'll be looking there tomorrow.
So I am, I am also hoping for something a little more comprehensive, but I'm hoping to send something out in each of my Friday emails, but that, you're right, that shouldn't negate them taking the bull by the horns and having some press releases, so at least people can-
How can we push them to that? Heidi hasn't received anything. Interlake's not seen anything. Radio, TV, nothing?
I can't force them to do anything, but I keep the pressure applied.
Okay.
That's all. I could just yield all my time to Richard, I guess. Thanks, staff, for budget, as always. I realize it's barely a five-month reprieve before the cycle starts again, but thank you, thank you. It's, we appreciate it. The new formats have been great. It works really, really well. I only have one other thing is, the striping and/or mostly crosswalk painting on Wisconsin, is that the state's responsibility? As I was running today and coming at Woodland Place, and I stood for fifteen cars passing me while I was actually in the road in the mostly worn-off crosswalk there, my thought was if at least it was painted on there. I mean, I was like pointing at the crosswalk, and I finally stepped out in front of somebody, and they had to lock them up. It's like, you know, but, and it's the same down by the ice rink and everything. Those crosswalks should, they, particularly, I think, before school starts. I mean, it would be, I think they should be done, so.
I've talked to MDT a couple times this summer about trying to get Wisconsin painted.
We, to come through and catch pretty much all of ninety-three, both East Second, well, East Second, West Second, and Spokane. That was all done in epoxy, and what I understood was they were at least going to use their own crew to do Wisconsin Avenue with waterborne paint. I'll reach out to MDT again and see if we can reiterate that. I'll also note, as I'm sure everyone's noticed, we've done quite a bit of seal coating throughout town over the last couple weeks, and we covered up a lot of our own crosswalks and centerlines, and we're working really hard to get all that back in shape before school starts. We're going to be working with a company to do some of the long lines, the bike lanes and centerlines, but we'll be doing our own crosswalks and symbols and whatnot on our own streets that we so successfully covered up.
And then my last thing with regard to crosswalks, I just want to remind the public, no, there's nobody here, but hopefully some people watching, that Central Avenue is not a theme park, and we do have crosswalks at the end of the blocks, and walking out blindly behind parked cars and assuming you're not going to get run over is probably a huge mistake. I cannot tell you how many people I have seen almost get hit this summer, and somebody's going to get hit, and people just need to think. It's, they literally just walk out and don't even look, and it's like, we're not a theme park. It's a street. It's a public right-of-way. Cars drive there. So anyway, that's my editorial note.
Thanks, Andy. Ryan?
Nothing.
Katie?
I really shouldn't use Richard to do this, but come one, come all, to the Whitefish Legacy Partners large fundraiser on Friday Depot Park. It is the hootenanny. It's the largest fundraiser for Whitefish Legacy Partners to help fund the Whitefish Trail, so there'll be lots of music, food, libations, climbing wall, and lots of opportunity to give to the Whitefish Trail. So we hope to see you there around five on Friday.
Thanks, Katie. Frank?
A couple of things. This has come up a number of times on a number of different projects, David. I've talked about it for years, literally. This issue of who we issue notices to about projects and development in neighborhoods. Hundred-and-fifty feet, I think we really need to figure out a better way or more expansive way to contact the people that will be affected most directly. Hundred-and-fifty feet doesn't get it. I know there's a cost associated with that. I know there's been some resistance, but I just think our community demands it, and I think we just need to look at it. And I'd like to see some kind of proposal from you or from staff on how we manage that problem and do something that's actually effective. I don't even know that two hundred and fifty feet would do it, given the effect of particularly Skiles or some other developments that we're seeing and have seen. Notifying people a hundred and fifty feet within a quarry didn't get it. And so I think we need to revisit some of that as to how far we send notices, and so I'd like to see us at least examine that and get some proposals on how we could do that effectively. And then, and for Dana, the, this is, this is just a nit, and you said it's the same problem all the communities have, which is the Medicare reimbursement for ambulance services is so de minimis that everybody's running a deficit. I don't know whether there's a process by which communities, because we can't be the only ones that are affected like this, that we don't make an application in Medicare and say, you need to adjust your rates. They won't do it otherwise, and, or they sure won't do it otherwise. So I think that we probably ought to look at that problem a little more globally, incorporate some involvement from the county and from other places, to submit a letter to Medicare and say, you guys are killing us.
So just to let you know, I was talking to Calispel, because they have an ambulance, and their city manager, Doug, went with, I think, Dave Fern to DC to try to lobby for adjustments to those rates. But, you know, it's something we'll start talking to Calispel about and see what we can do on the federal level, because that, that's where it's going to have to come from, you know?
Right. So anyway, I think we just need to think through that a little bit, or we're just going to have to take a broader approach to it, in my view, anyway. And that's kind of all I had. Thanks.
Thanks, Frank. Melissa? I have nothing further. Anything else from staff? We are adjourned. Thanks.